Please rise. O divine master in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag.
Pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't have any announcements, but we have a presentation.
Mr. President, you asked me to remind you about announcing the executive sessions before the meeting this evening.
Yes, you can.
For a matter of litigation. The first presentation is a proclamation of appreciation from Ms. Janine Riley's assistance with the 2016 Fun Fest. Mr. Griffin, I know that the Fun Fest, bringing it back to Fayette Street was yours, and you have graciously asked if the mayor would want to present the proclamation. As everyone knows, Ms. Janine Riley, along with Kate Cosman, who's staff, the time that Janine put in in making the Fun Fest, which was Ike's goal and council's goal to bring it back to Fayette, without Janine, the hours that she put in, I don't know that we have the successful event that we had. There were many volunteers, no question, but clearly Ms. Riley was right at the forefront with staff. So, Mr. Mayor?
This is in honor and appreciation of Janine V. Riley for her assistance with the 2016 Fun Fest event. Whereas Ms. Janine Riley has been a resident of the borough of Conchahocken for nearly a decade, her family has made Conchahocken their home, and since January of 2015, Ms. Riley has given back her time and talent to the community by serving on the borough's municipal authority. And whereas Ms. Riley began serving on the Fun Fest planning team, and that is co-chair of the Fun Fest committee, where she attended countless meetings, making herself available any day of the week while preparing and organizing the day's festivities. And whereas Ms. Riley collaborated closely with other members of the planning team, borough staff, vendors, sponsors, entertainers, and local borough business owners, and went above and beyond any expectations to make the event a success. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the borough of Conchahocken recognizes Mrs. Janine Riley's commitment to bringing the Fun Fest back to Fayette Street in a memorable way and as a wonderful community event on September 17, 2016, for distinguished service to the borough of Conchahocken, all the important people, borough manager, president, Mr. Griffin, and the mayor himself. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Freddie. Okay, Mr. Griffin, next up is a presentation by Ms. Julie Davis. As you know, Ms. Davis is the borough's finance compliance audit specialist. For everyone who knows, doesn't know her background, she's been doing this for a few years at her young age, and she also has an MBA, CPA, and has been doing audits for a very long time. And as you know, we have the audit done. I will, as many of you know, the history with our audits. This one has been done in record time, and she is here just to present the findings and talk briefly and answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Julie.
Okay. So, the audit was performed by the CPA firm, the Bergville &amp; Company. So, I'm not going to present their results. I'm from a different firm, so I'm just an outside consultant. I didn't actually do this. But, you just want me to do the findings, Rich?
Yep. And then talk about whatever you want to in the audit report.
Okay.
Make the more and answer any council questions.
Okay, that's good, because that'll lead into the audit report. So, the audit firm had, well, let me just talk about the timing of the audits. When I came in, in 2014 to help out, it was in the fall, still hadn't started the 2013 audit in the fall of '14, which is pretty bad. And so, that took, there was challenges there, and that took a while for the previous auditors to work that out. And that audit was issued in April of 2015, so a year-plus late. In 2014, for the 2014 audit, we still had a lot of challenges to overcome, software problems, et cetera, and some challenges there, and that audit got issued in January of 2016, this year. So, for 2014. So, for this year, we worked hard, Angela and myself and others, and were ready for the auditors in June? June? And so, this year, we have the audit report issued in less than nine months. Woo! And so, it was issued in September, which is a big win, but it's still not enough. Next year, we'd like to get it issued in, by June, end of June. Okay? So, remarkably, after all of that, the auditors only had four findings. So, I think you all have the letter in front of you, I hope. And the first one, and it's a big one, is that you don't present government-wide financial statements. So, because you've never seen them before, maybe you're not sure exactly what they are, let me just give you a quick explanation. Government-wide financial statements take all the government funds of the borough and collapse them into one statement. And this statement is presented on a full accrual basis, which means it has a long-term view. It presents your long-term assets, like capital assets, net depreciation. It presents long-term liabilities, such as your debt, OPEB, your OPEB liability, which you don't have yet, but you will, and your net pension liability. So, those are the big ones. So, it gives you a better overall picture of the borough's financial health. So, those aren't presented, haven't been presented in the past for one reason or another. And so, that was a finding. And if you look at your audit report, you can see in the opinion letter that you did get an adverse opinion on the entity, on the statements, because those weren't presented. They give you a clean opinion on the rest of the information presented, because that information presented was presented properly. Okay? So, that is our goal for the 2016 audit, that we are going to get these government-wide statements done. The two pieces of information, we don't have yet to present them, are the OPEB valuation, which is the other retirement, I'm sorry, post-retirement benefit actuarial valuation, which is in process. So, the good news about that is we should have that by the end of the year.
If not sooner.
Yeah. So, that's the one piece of information. The other thing, and this is the big, big, big project, is the capital assets listing. So, it's itemized in this response here, what kind of things we're looking at, but we need to accumulate a list of buildings, land, furniture, equipment, which isn't the hardest part. The hardest part is going to be the infrastructure, the roads, the bridges, curbs, sidewalks, traffic lights. So, that's the challenge. So, Steph is working on it. I'll be working on it. Well, I'll be working on it, and we're going to try to get that ready for the audit, which would be in the spring of 2017. Okay? So, hopefully, that will be gone next year. Okay. So, comment number two was regarding the post-employment benefit valuation, which we just discussed, that we didn't have that in place and we should have, which will be done. So, that's going to go away.
And just as a side note, as you know, in the 2016 budget, we've also ceded funding an OPEB trust, which is, which will be a critical piece to whatever the valuation produces going forward in time.
Okay. So, those were the two serious comments, and I feel pretty confident that they will be gone in your next audit report. I've talked to the auditors about doing the government-wide, even if maybe we don't have the capital assets listing, and we can do that, and we will do that, but I hope to have it all. The other thing that goes in the report that we don't have typically, and this isn't, it's not in here because it's not required, is something called a management discussion and analysis document. And what that is, is it's basically management, Rich writes, or me, writes a summary of this audit report, sort of a plain language summary, so that the average reader could look at it and kind of get an idea of what happened during the year. You know, if it's written properly, it tells you everything you need to know without going back to all the detail in the audit report. So, that's something else that we would like to add.
Next year.
Next year. Seventeen, 16 audit in '17. So, those are the two major comments. Any questions on that? No? Okay. The third comment was that they noted that the borough manager was approving all cash disbursement invoices, but you were not getting a listing to approve. That has since been, in fact, that was fixed before they even reported it.
Before the finding came down.
So, that one's gone. Number four is that they would like to see more comprehensive and better written accounting policies and procedures of the internal controls. So, that's pretty important, and we do have a written document, but it's sort of been patched together here and there, you know, as we were scrambling to finish various audits and things. We've been making corrections as we go. So, we believe that procedures are in place, we just need to get a better written document. So, this isn't to say that you don't have internal control procedures, you do, but we just need a better document, and we will do that. So, hopefully, all four of these, the plan is, will be gone by next year.
First quarter next year.
Yes.
2016.
Correct. That is correct.
The '16 audit performed in '17.
Right.
Yeah.
But as the first two or three already noted, they're already fixed, but because they're looking at the year, not where we are. And just incidentally, one of the things that Julie and I have been looking at, and you'll have it for the December work session, is a draft capitalization policy, which is part of the whole capitalization plan.
That's kind of the first step to developing the capital assets list, because if you set a capitalization policy for computer equipment of $3,000, because you don't want to be running around tracking printers and things like that, and a lot of people do that, that's not unusual, we don't want to be bothered with coming up with a list of that if we don't need it for the cap. I mean, you might want one internally, and you probably have one internally.
We have, right now, it's $5,000 internally.
Yeah. So, that's the first step, and you guys have to vote on that and approve it, and then...
So, that's saying at any given time, we have this value of equipment in our possession?
We get a piece of equipment that is, I think right now, we're looking at $4,000, that anytime we have it, it becomes capitalized asset and treated and tracked as such.
Okay, so, right now, we don't have that in written policy.
Correct.
But what is the dollar?
$5,000.
$5,000.
Well, you can, and the other thing is, you can set a different scope for different types of equipment, because, you know, $4,000 equipment for public works equipment might be, you know, too low. Yeah. So, you can say, "Public works equipment is 10," you know, "computer equipment..."
Is 2.
2, you know. You can specify all that stuff. You don't want to make it too crazy, you know, because then you'll start to lose track, but yeah, you can really...
Plus your inventory and tracking and others.
The nice thing about government accounting is you're not tied to the IRS rules about that kind of thing. So, you can set it at what you think is reasonable. So, I wasn't going to go through this audit report unless you had any questions about it, because it's not my report, but I have read it, and I could answer any questions if you had them.
Before we do that, I have a question about the capital asset list. Are you saying that there's different levels for different types of equipment?
Mm-hmm.
So, that, okay, so that's why it would be longevity of a piece of equipment, factors into it? Okay.
The other piece of the...
Replacement value.
Replacement value, okay.
The other piece of the capitalization policy that you'll be approving is you'll be approving useful lives. So, you're going to say, "A computer is going to have a three-year useful life." You're going to say, "A police car is probably going to have three or four, because they get beat up."
Right.
And they're not going to be like a typical vehicle. You're going to say, "A dump truck." I mean, a public works dump truck can last like decades if it's properly repaired. I have clients with some that are from 1950-something, some ridiculous thing that they're still using.
Good mechanics.
Hmm?
I know who she's referring to. Good mechanic.
Yeah. So, you're going to also, that's all going to be spelled out in the policy.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
More questions?
Any other questions?
No questions?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Griffin, the next item on the agenda is 737 Spring Mill Avenue, land development waiver request. Mr. John DePietro is here. I don't know if Mr. Savona wants to introduce it or simply let Mr. DePietro speak. Do you have a preference?
My decision is rather a routine matter. Council had a resolution suggesting to approve a waiver of strict application of the land development requirements for the project at 737 Spring Mill Avenue. This is a property that is located predominantly in White Marsh Township. The developer is proposing to construct seven single-family houses. Approximately one house is completely located within the borough. There may be like 1.4% of the houses, or 1.4 houses are actually within the borough, but it's predominantly a White Marsh project. It has gone through zoning approval in front of both the White Marsh Zoning Board and the Borough's Zoning Board. It has been approved for final land development approval by White Marsh. Because White Marsh will be inspecting all of the site improvements, the NS control measures, and doing the majority of the actual onsite inspection work, Mr. DePietro suggested that perhaps it would be more appropriate, rather than have the applicant go through redundant land development here, if the council would be willing to consider a waiver of land development, then we could approve the project for construction, delegate White Marsh and their engineer to do all of the inspections of the site improvements, even though they may be in the borough. It would avoid duplication of engineers tripping over each other down there, and then the applicant would only be required to come to the borough for the building permit and for the inspections here for the single house that's strictly within the borough. It does sort of seem to make a lot of sense. Mr. DePietro, if you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Savona, that's accurate. We are ready to go. White Marsh has requested a copy of the resolution should council decide to approve it, and I would just agree with the remarks that you described. Thank you.
So, if council's inclined, a motion would be in order to approve the resolution. That would grant the waiver, subject to the conditions I just stated, and the applicant, of course, would pay the fee in lieu of the provision of recreation space for the single house, which would be $4,000 paid at the time of the building permit.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, before I introduce the consent agenda as it is written, there's an item F on the consent agenda, which is to approve Engaging Gilmore Associates, Inc. to serve as a consultant to the borough. Borough council and the mayor has had their proposal with their rates, et cetera, and the mayor had some very specific questions last month, one in particular that I wanted to make sure I answer publicly, since he asked it publicly, was with respect to, will he be charging portal, portal? I've asked those from Gilmore, Ms. McNair, if you would please, go to the podium. This is Karen McNair.
Hello.
Karen would be the engineer who would be providing the land use reviews for Gilmore, and she lives in Lafayette Hill. So, even though she lives in Lafayette Hill, Gilmore has agreed that there would be no portal, portal charges, even, especially since she lives in Lafayette Hill. But I wanted her to come in case, you wanted to meet her, ask her any questions about her experiences, or just, if nothing else, to meet her. But again, it is a consent agenda item, so if you want to just introduce yourself very briefly, Karen?
I'm Karen McNair. I've been working at Gilmore and Associates for 11 years, so I have 11 years' experience in municipal engineering. I went to school at Penn State and Villanova, so I'm local. I grew up in Amington and now live in Lafayette Hill, as Rich said. Along with myself, Craig Kennard will be working with you all, should you appoint us tonight, and he has nearly 25 years' experience in municipal engineering. So, I think we have a great team working for you, should you appoint us tonight. And then, if you have any other questions, I can answer them for you right now.
Do you have land use experience?
Oh, yes. That's part of, that's my 11 years of experiences in land use and municipal engineering. Thank you.
Karen, one of the things we talked about two weeks ago was the fact that you guys offer the grant writing assistance.
Yes.
And obviously, according to what you've given us, have been very successful at.
Yes.
Is that a fee-based thing, a percentage of the grant, or are you just kind of throwing it out there as a...
Sure, that's municipal by municipal base. Some clients ask us to prepare a proposal for them before we do a grant, to give them an idea of how much it would cost for us to prepare a proposal. And then, again, we would do the same thing for the grant process, so it'd be awarded and provide costs or time of material for how much it would take to design the grant application. In other cases, municipalities would just ask us to go ahead and prepare the application and submit it on behalf of the municipality. So, again, we can do it either way. We've done it both ways, any other way, the client would ask for as well.
Do you find there's some redundancy there, like maybe Bristol's applying for the same grant as we are, somebody else has just laid out Bristol, but Conchahocken?
Sure, yeah. You know, we have a lot of municipalities. We have over 80 municipal clients, including sewer authorities. So, when we do find opportunities that multiple clients are applying for the same grant, we do try and spread across the cost savings to multiple municipalities, so that we're not charging one municipality the cost for the first preparation and then charging lesser amounts to the others. So, we do try and spread that across, and we do often have multiple municipalities applying for the same grant, so we do often have cost savings that we can pass along.
Do you, um, just lost my train of thought. Do you follow the grants that are being offered, or is that kind of up to us to come to you? Are you putting one that says, "This grant is the one you guys want to go for"?
Yeah, well, we kind of do it both ways. We will have clients that tell us, "Hey, we want to apply for this application. Let us know when it becomes available," and we will track that. But again, because we have so many municipal clients, we're always keeping an eye out for which applications are coming forward, and when we know there's a grant opportunity that would fit well with the municipality, we will make sure that we let the municipal staff know that there's an opportunity that might be of interest.
What other townships or boroughs do you represent?
Me personally?
Yeah.
I work in Warminster Township and in New Hope Borough. Our company has multiple clients in Montgomery and Bucks Counties primarily.
City of Philadelphia?
City of Philadelphia. We do have several contracts with the City of Philadelphia. They do municipal engineering in-house, but we do have contracts with them for construction inspection, for their parks and recreation, for general engineering services, and for transportation with their signals.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Rick?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Griffin, the consent agenda items A through F is presented to you for consideration. And if once council, I would suggest, if there are no other, if there are no other issues, I'd suggest a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. The next item, Mr. Griffin, is to continue the goals and objectives discussion, capital budget presentations, and this will be Mr. Hughes's night, as Mr. Sawkalowski was two nights ago, and then we'll have the whole team here on November 2nd. The, as you know, we went through the priority matters on parks last time. He is going to focus this evening, again, being done in such a way so that all things are digestible and nothing is missed, but he is going to go through all of the other major capital projects that were identified by council throughout the goal-setting sessions, as well as those projects that were underway last year. One of the first things you're going to see are the projects that have been started, but either not completed. I will point out one thing to you that was a priority of the previous council, that this council has looked at, but I will tell you that unless I hear something to the contrary, I'm going to be strongly recommending, or you will not see in the proposed budget, the $300,000 expense for air conditioning at the community center, as one example of what you're going to see right now. So, if you see it in red, you'll understand that I asked him to put it in red, because unless council directs me to, prior to November 2nd, that will not be in my proposed budget to you. Mr. Hughes, if you would.
So, why is it in the budget?
It was a priority last time.
Oh, it's carried over.
It was carried over. We went out to bid. The bid was very high.
Right, right.
And given, given the priorities that have come out of the council's goal-setting sessions, I just don't see that as being money that's, with all that you have, and keep in mind, there are other things that you've asked for, that, for example, we're going to be getting into a pavement management program, because there are other assets that you want to take a look at, maybe taking over, and other things, which will all get presented on the both, when you can have the revenues, the future balances, revenues forward. It'll all make more sense when we put it all together at the November 2nd presentation, but I just wanted to make sure that he goes through the details of each project, so that it's more digestible.
I'd just like to speak on that for a minute, if it's okay. You know, we always talk about, we put all this money in these, and I always say, "The A Field." We always put a lot of money in the A Field, but it's underutilized. I think the fellowship house is underutilized also, and I think if we don't air-condition the gym, I think we're going to, we're not going to get as many people to use it in the hot weather, and I just think it's, it should be on our priority list to make that happen.
It, there are things that we are looking at, that council's asked me to look at, that aren't part of this discussion this evening, that I will be reaching out to council about, as far as operations of the facility and...
I mean, we spend a lot of money over there. I mean, if we don't have people using it, you know, that's something we had on our goals, to get more people in that facility.
I understand.
So...
That's on Park and Brick, right?
So, Rich, will we...
That's an impact fee? You can use that?
Well, as of right now, and that's part of the problem, we utilized all of the impact fees to take care of the A Field this year. So, unless some of these developments, which we don't know, I mean, we know what schedule, we know what may come in, but we can't bank, that's kind of what I said last time, we can't bank on those revenues, because if something doesn't happen, we can't budget for dollars that we don't have. Yes?
So, on November 2nd, will we get our budget book?
You'll, on November 2nd, you will get the budget book, the whole proposed budget that shows everything.
So, will we have a spreadsheet that has categories and dollars in a single-page view, so that we're not trying to figure out how much money... so that we're not trying to figure out how much money is sitting out there page by page? This is the dollar amount that you would need to invest in everything that you prioritize.
On the capital budget side, yes.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Good, Paul.
Good.
All right, thank you. So like Rich said, I'm here to present the, I'll say, the balance of 2017 proposed capital projects for council to consider. I wanted to give you guys a quick, brief overview. There's three distinct programs that we separated projects in this year. First program is the infrastructure program. The second program is the liquid fuels program, which is simply the liquid fuels dollars funding available for paving our streets. And the third is facilities capital improvements. So you'll see projects that fall into different categories. What I wanted to do first was just talk briefly about the infrastructure program, which is one of the first things that we worked on when Mr. Manfredi came on board a few years ago, which was in 2014. So we started to put together a five-year plan as a look ahead, where every year we would have five years planned out, and then we would plan the sixth year, and then that would become a rolling plan, so that any given time, we have a short-term look ahead, but we can kind of keep it a little bit flexible as, you know, things change and rec fees come and go, that kind of thing. We also deal with what I'm calling the hard infrastructure at the borough facilities and parks, which are things like the air conditioning. We talked about that a little bit. And the Suckler Park project and the A field potential track project that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. This is a previous year breakdown. This is something that you would have seen in the budgets for last year. This is just to kind of give you a frame of reference from the budget documentation from last year. So it shows the 2015 infrastructure project for Harry Street, which was rolled over to 2016, and then combined as a larger project, which, as you might recall, we've since rebid, had an unsuccessful bidding experience, and are looking to potentially get it out on the street again. That was the 2016 project. Also for 2016, there is storm sewer rehab and congestion mitigation and air quality, which is the CMAC project you may have heard about. Those two are ongoing. We're not going to talk about those tonight. But the infrastructure for Harry Street, and then new proposals for 2017 will come up tonight as well.
Very quickly, that 1.2, so if you were looking in your budget, in your capital budget, from 2016, you'll see a line item that says infrastructure projects. It's 1.8 million. This is the street part of that, not including one other project. That's the 670,000. So this is the 1.2 part of it.
Okay, so we have not done these projects.
The reason it's broken, just to be clear, the reason it's broken out this way is because in 2015 budget had 486. That project did not go off and was rolled forward to be added to the 2016 project, which was the 482, which we went out for, and then the 100,000 storm sewer, which we are doing part of.
We are going to use some of that budget this year, yes.
So that's part of what he talked about two meetings ago.
All right, so as it stands right now, whatever's left that we haven't spent as of December 31st, of that 1.2 million, is, will roll into 2017 dollars?
Not necessarily.
And that's what I would like...
That's what, you will see that on the second, what we're recommending. And I will tell you now, that based on the goals and objectives of this council, the things I've heard you say, I cannot see, and this is a conversation we had today, I do not see us rolling 2.1 million dollars forward for an infrastructure program for next year alone, because that's what it would take. Knowing what the balances are, what I'm going to be showing you on November 2nd, it'll all make sense to you. For example, we have $3 million in our capital reserve. Capital fund will be, I have the numbers, but roughly right today, depending upon what happens with other projects and some decisions you might make unrelated to the budget, still for projects this year, for example, fitness equipment in the community center, other projects. How much we're, now that we got the go-ahead from PennDOT on the CMAC project, it's anticipated that it could be moving forward only $400,000. So as these things get decided, as we look at our balances, I will have all of that for you, to be very crystal clear, on November 2nd in the proposed budget. Again, you won't vote on anything until November 16th, but I will go through in great detail on November 2nd everything, so that you can make an informed decision. But I don't see that happening, truthfully. So that's why I asked him to break this down, so you could see what each project is.
So although we prioritize a list of goals moving forward, there may be reprioritization of goals that did not occur in 2016 that have to roll, which could then push goals of 2017 out further.
That is correct. Yeah, you'll be making all those decisions. I'm just presenting them to you in a format, so that you could say, talk about it and say, you know what? Looking at the big picture, let's push that to 2018. Let's move this up. You'll be telling me, and then that's what will go into, when actually gets advertised, as the proposed budget for the public to comment on, that you'll vote on two weeks later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So here's a quick overview of all the projects. The two at the top, the A field track and the Suckler Park, we talked about a couple of weeks ago, so I won't be touching on them tonight. As I mentioned, we're splitting these into individual programs, which relate to certain funds in the budget. The first program is the 2017 infrastructure program. That includes the Harry Street project that we've talked about and bid this year. The Harry Street resurfacing project, which was originally scheduled for 2017 as the final phase of the Harry Street project, is on the 2017 slate. And a new project, which is the Stoddard Avenue Storm Sewer Project, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. 2017 Liquid Fuels Program, the project I have slated for that funding is West Fifth Avenue, right next to the building, of course. And 2017 Facilities Capital Improvements, which the two at the top, in reality, would be slid underneath in that program. We're going to talk a little bit about a potential for a fencing and screening project at the A field. This is a discussion point for an alternative for a full replacement of the wall over there. And then also, we mentioned the air conditioning, so we'll touch on that. So this is a revised budget, that's again, includes the 2015 and the 2016, and then the new projects for 2017. The 2015 and 2016 budget revision is, of course, based on our experience with the bidding climate and the bids that we've received, discussion with contractors and so forth, to make sure that we are, if it goes forward, funding or budgeting, I should say, enough to make sure we have a viable project. Of course, we are still pushing as hard as we can to get competitive bids and get that number down as best we can, but this is a, I think, a reasonable budget. The Harry Street resurfacing project, again, as I mentioned, was the original scheduled project for infrastructure for 2017, and the Stoddard Avenue Storm Sewer improvements. So that grand total, as Rich mentioned, comes to what would normally be an alarming $2.1 million. And so that's what we'll have to see how it shakes out. Here's a full list of the 2017 projects broken down. The infrastructure projects are in bold at the top. I mentioned the liquid fuels, West Fifth Avenue, the community center AC, and then the rest of the facilities projects there at the bottom. So that would be the kind of the full slate of projects that are, at this point, up for consideration.
And I think 2017 considered projects is probably more accurate than proposed.
So the first project, and I'm going to go through each project just very briefly, we're up to a proposed budget, which is intended to be an all-in for construction, any outside services for onsite inspections and so forth. We also have some contingencies built in there, and we have an alternate bid for creating some additional parking over by Marywood Park. So that, again, is an all-in budget. If we put that back out, we'd hope to be able to get a base bid a little bit lower than that with good competition. But right now, we have the proposed budget at about 1.5 million. To do a quick recap of that, that includes all of Harry Street being considered for new curb ramps and storm sewer where it's needed, storm sewer running along East 11th Avenue at the A field, as well as down East 10th Avenue to get a tie-in down at Wells, and then East 6th Avenue next to the park, new storm sewer in that system as well. The proposal for this, in terms of bidding, would be actually to rebid it this year, which would provide an opportunity to know even before the end of the year if we're going to get a viable project out of the deal, rather than wait. So at this point, I have a schedule to rebid that during the month of November, so we see how it's going to shake out. The Harry Street resurfacing project, this one, if the other two phases of the project had already gone off, this schedule might be, have been adjusted. Of course, if both projects are selected and go off, this, of course, is being scheduled for the fall, assuming that the winter and early spring would be the storm sewer and curb ramp portion of the project, and then the complete resurfacing of Harry Street, as well as the 100 block of 11th, the 100 block of 6th, and the trench restorations on East 10th would be done all at once, but would have to be pushed back to the fall to ensure good timing with the utility project. The Stoddard Avenue Storm Sewer Project, I'm not sure if you're all aware of the storm sewer issue that we have over there. There's a collapsing storm sewer facility that runs underneath the Septa tracks. This is simply a diversion, so we can just get out of their hair. So we can literally abandon in place, fill in with a flowable fill our facility that's underneath the tracks, and just take our storm sewer somewhere else. We've had less than a successful experience in terms of coordinating with them to get some kind of solution over there, since we found that this facility was collapsing almost two years ago. So we've come up with, again, a solution just to bypass the system altogether, tie into a much more modern, you know, new reinforced concrete pipes that already run under the tracks, and have an outfall down at the Skookel River, and we can just get out of their hair. So this is another project that, if this one's selected, we're putting this in the category of previous years, which has been the Storm Sewer Rehab Project, and kind of take that funding and slot it in for this project. If this one does go forward, you see the schedule has it being done pretty early in the year with a kind of design right after, right in January. This would be an in-house design project that I would do personally, and then get it right out to bid and construct it as early, either in the late winter or early spring, as we can get it done. So those are the infrastructure program projects. The liquid fuels project I mentioned is West Fifth Avenue. The reason it's only one location is because of the condition of West Fifth Avenue. From Fayette to Maple, it's not very good. We also have an issue there with a concrete slab that appears to have been placed over the aqua water main. And as some of you are aware, there's been a couple of situations where there's the appearance of sinkholes, where there's settlement underneath the slab, and the pavement kind of collapses on top. So also, pretty much since the beginning of this project, we've been looking at making sure that that got redone. That's now, of course, the main entrance for the police and for Borough Hall. So it's kind of been on the schedule for a while. We were actually hoping to get to it this year, shuffled some things around, so have it on the schedule for the liquid fuels funds for 2017.
What happens to the paving program if, instead of using the liquid fuels monies to pave, we use it for this project? Just pave?
The paving program, meaning...
Let's just say, let's just say, one of the decisions is to use liquid fuels money strictly for overlay. What happens to this project?
Either this project would have to be paid for out of general funds, or it could be...
Or out of capital funds, or some other funds.
Or kicked down the road, but yeah.
That's an example of what I'm talking about, that I'll be talking about on the second. Liquid fuels dollars are fixed dollars that come based on the number of miles of roads. One of the policy decisions that I think council has to make is, do you want to dedicate those dollars to paving and overlay, or do you want to use it for capital infrastructure improvements like this? So there's, one of the things you're going to hear me talk about is the development of a pavement management plan throughout 2017. 2017, from everything I've been hearing from council, is going to be a very large planning year. So, you know, how much do we want to do? How much do we want to plan for? Do we want to use 2017 as a planning year, get as much done as council would like to get done, but focus more on 18, 19, 20, since this is a new council? So those are the kinds of discussions that the presentation will try to generate for you to give direction on, and then make changes for you to vote on on the 16th. That's the kind of information we'll be discussing on the second.
Next project, to move on to the facilities improvements, the air conditioning that we've discussed. This is simply a regurgitation, essentially, of the same project that was out next year, but with a more realistic budget. So that budget's upwards of almost $350,000. That is based on an engineer's estimate, and also from bid results. We did have bidders, and they were in that, they were all in that range. So that's now the new reality of the cost for that project.
Just for the gym?
Yes, yeah. So...
Hard to believe.
It is, but it's, I've had it reviewed a couple of times, and...
How many bidders do we have?
We had three.
Yeah.
So if, as you might imagine, the schedule, if that is selected, it would be something that we'd want to do right away and make sure it was done before the summer, but that will be up for discussion. You might recall last year, we looked at doing the wall replacement. Now, I didn't get any bids on the wall project. What I did get was some feedback from a precaster who gave a quote just to make these panels and columns, and that price came in at $440,000. And that's with no other prep work, you know, no mobilization, no cleanup, none of the, what we're calling a grade beam that was going to need to be set around the entire perimeter to house this wall. That's a pretty high discrepancy between two different precasters. So that project, of course, could still be considered. What we wanted to bring up was the possibility of doing something like a fencing and a landscape screening, that we've been talking about internally. And one example that I noticed just recently was the Nova Care complex around the Eagles Practice Facility, where they have a decorative black fence, and basically just a row of shrubs of some kind, whether they're arborvitae or not, I'm not sure. But so we put together a budget estimate to actually wrap the perimeter with that fence. Of course, the fence would still have the gates in both locations, the front and the back.
The lock gates.
What's that?
The lock gates.
Oh, yeah, we were, yeah. And then, of course, to have the buffer screening. It's still not an inexpensive project. It's about 1,500 feet all the way around. So it's a lot of fence and a lot of shrubs. So the budget estimate for that one comes out to $376,500. Again, not nothing, but from what we're seeing for a complete rebuild of the wall, it still would be presumably less than where that would shake out. So again, just another idea to consider.
Now, let's back up to, and you were involved in it, 2005, I showed you that plan. I think I showed some of council that plan. That's a great look. I mean, but also, it would be nice to put those brick piers in.
The piers and the fence.
The piers would match the front of the building, the red brick piers, with a nice cap on top of them. That would bring a little bit of integrity to it.
Sure.
You know? I mean, I don't think that would add a lot of money to the cost, but I think it would make it look a lot, you know, jazz it up a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely pull some, I've seen plenty of art of those around. We could pull that and show those.
I think you did the drawing.
What's that?
I think you did the drawing.
I probably did. But yeah, definitely plenty of examples of that. We can pull some, put some pictures together to take a look at that kind of an option.
I have a question on that, the fencing, the pricing of the budget proposal to put the fencing up. Does that include the cost of taking the wall down?
Yes. Yeah, there's a demolition element in that as well, yes. A demolition, some kind of prep work, especially on the sides where the retaining wall is going to remain.
Right.
Some of the area could just be your typical fence installation, some of it's going to have to be mounted in different ways on that fence. So yeah, some of that contributes to how that cost inflates a little bit. But yeah, that's, that would be an estimate for an all-in project, yes.
And how about the sound barrier with that wall, with just that?
There's nothing proposed specifically for sound. Now, imagine, you know, you have a tight enough landscape buffer, you'll get a little bit of that. There are products that you can put on fencing, which I don't know...
My question is, when we take the wall down, we're losing that, correct? Some of that?
Well, you're losing some of it, yeah. That's the only thing that you would have there really would be, if the buffering is dense enough, you know, you'll get a little bit of that, but clearly not quite as much as you'd get with a solid wall.
Okay.
And keep in mind, we're just showing this as an alternative because of the issues we had with the wall.
I understand, yeah.
No decision as to which one.
No.
What the difference in maintenance to this and the wall? With all the bushes.
There is a lot of bushes.
Yeah, I know there is.
Well, I thought the idea was to spec an arborvitae or something that is extremely low, if not no maintenance, something of that nature.
Yeah. That's what the pricing includes from the landscape architect, is your typical arborvitae. So, yeah, I know, they're not necessarily the most needy of plants.
They get pretty thick and pretty...
Yeah, once they start to grow together, yeah.
High, they get in height.
Yeah. Anything else on that one?
No.
All right. Well, I guess I'm done, actually. This is just an overall map, kind of showing the locations of the different projects, including the other two that we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Just run through them really, very quickly, and go back through the summary sheet with each project, and then that's it. And then take any questions. each project, and then that's it. And then take any questions.
This sheet here?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, to review, we've got three infrastructure projects, the Harry Street Storm Sewer and curb ramp improvements, Harry Street resurfacing, and the Sodder Avenue Storm Sewer Project to bypass the Septa Trax. The Liquid Fuels Program is the West Fifth Avenue resurfacing from Fayette Street to Maple Street, and the facilities improvements are the air conditioning to the community center gymnasium, the A Field fencing and screening, Suck Cliff Park path widening, and the A Field Track Project.
And the total of all of those?
That's the one thing I don't have.
We could do the math.
No, no, you're in a map, you're not going to get it that quick.
There's a reason I asked the question. I know there's not a total. It's far greater than 2.1.
Yeah.
It's the point I'm trying to make, so, okay.
One more question.
May as you like.
So, we have 2.1 million from this year. What do we have from this year sitting there? Anyway, if we spent that this year, what would be the dollars, where would the pool of dollars come from, if we didn't roll dollars over for next year? Would that come from our reserves? Should we set our capital funds?
The proposed numbers in all of this is capital. So, for example-
Unless you put money in, the capital balance is static year over year.
Well, we did it a little differently, and as you notice from looking at the budget, the way I prepare a budget, is I break things out into capital and operating, so that the regular dollars, the regular tax dollars, real estate tax, earned income tax, BPT, all of those revenue streams that are fairly consistent make up your operating revenues, and then you have your operating expenses. Last year, there was always a capital fund. We broke two more funds out. Capital reserve, a capital project, which was primarily for this building, and then a capital fund, which funded all of those other projects that we've been talking about throughout the course of the year. So, let's just say that we stayed on track with where we are today. Where we are today, once we move the $500,000 from the general fund to the capital fund, that would bring our balance to approximately $661,000. Now, these numbers-
In which fund?
Into the capital. Projects that we still have outstanding, there are still some, for example, that we're not sure of. But, you know, depending upon what happens with the community center, does council say, let's go buy $90,000 worth of equipment and move in there? Do we want to spend another $8,000 on, which is something I'm going to talk to you about very briefly under new business, another $8,000 on Aubrey Collins, bringing that total to 40,000 to 45,000, from 38,000? How much, now that we now have the approval to go ahead with CMAC, I need some verification from our traffic engineer. How much of the 142 are we going to have to spend? How much of the, are we going to spend all of the 100,000 on a storm sewer based on those final numbers? So, let's just say that depending upon where we are, such as the fire service radios that we approved the additional monies for, what we have yet to spend on the rowing center lease for the equipment, depending upon where we are with the joint project with West Conshohocken, how much traffic engineering, those are the things that I'm trying to get final numbers on, so that I have a solid January 1, 2017 number to put at the top of this, so you'll know where our monies are. It's conceivable that we'll move forward, January 1, 2017, without any appropriations further. Now, I'm just talking about moving forward, carry forward, $422,000. But then we have the Capital Reserve Fund. The Capital Reserve Fund, right now, I would estimate it's going to be somewhere around $3 million, but there's a few factors, which we will talk about perhaps, if we go back into executive session after this, that might affect that balance going forward. So, that's why we're in the process of finalizing all of those numbers, what revenues, what our expenses are for October, November, December, to have a real general fund balance going forward. I will have all of those projections on November 2nd, so you'll know what's what. But, what I'm trying to, what I cautioned council to, if you remember this last year, is we have to be very cautious about what our fund balance policy is moving forward. There's a lot of unknowns. We can't take every dollar we have in capital reserve and spend it. We have to be smart about how, at least my recommendation to you, is that we be smart how we handle our capital reserves and our fund balances over the next four to five years, as we wait for the development to happen along the river. You're talking about a comprehensive plan. We're going to have to fund the, a comprehensive plan. We're going to have to fund the riverfront plan, a park master plan. There's a lot of survey work for some of the other things you want to do with other roads that may not be streets, maybe alleys. So, all of that stuff is going to reduce the total amount of capital available. I know I'm going on in a long-winded manner.
Do we get, when do we get that back?
Which money?
You dag money?
Um-
Don't we get it back pretty soon?
2017 or 2018, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's 2018.
Then it's our money, right?
Yes.
But it's 2018, but again-
How much is that again?
3.65.
3.65.
3,650 odd thousand dollars.
But that's not 2017. And that's what I'm trying to say. We have to look at this over multiple years.
All right.
Okay. I'll try to answer your question or not?
It gives me a better picture on where we stand with capital dollars. What I'm trying to kind of dig at and get at is, these aren't, these go away after a while. How do these funds, what decisions have to be made, or where do the incoming dollars to make sure that these funds either stay at this number, because that's the policy, that we want our reserve to be always be at 3 million? So, that's what I'm trying to get at, is they're not unlimited, it has to be refunded, and is that coming from operational revenues that would be-
It can come from excess revenues. Like, if you finish, a lot of times, again, the budget, I see this in a lot of newspapers, budgets are just projections. You could finish the year a million dollars ahead of where you thought you would be in terms of your expenses. A lot of times, you will transfer that to capital, so that it's like putting it into a savings account. Or, you can decide in the budget that you want to transfer a fixed amount every year into a savings account, into your capital reserve. It really depends on how you want to set it up.
Do we have existing policies from prior councils that say that this money is directed to this fund or this fund, or is that something that the council at the time determined?
I think it's not been done on a set policy basis. Over the years, if there were excess revenues, they would get transferred to capital reserves. If you knew you had an upcoming expenditure, like a fire truck or something, they would maybe plan for that a year or two out, so that it was funded. But it hasn't been on a systemic sort of basis. It's been done, as there were excess revenues, they would be allocated to capital reserve, like you would at your household budget.
Sure.
Short answer to your question is, it's been done council by council.
Okay. And at what point in the budget process, because December 31st, and it takes several weeks to actually figure out what our end balance is for the calendar, or the fiscal year, so at what point in the process, then, do we, as a team, need to say, we're taking those dollars and allocating them to the capital reserve?
I have a, by November 16th, when you're voting on your proposed budget, you will have a realistic projection of what our balances will be, January 1, 2017. So, if you look at the balance sheet that you have right now, with all of the balances where the general fund is, obviously, we project out expenditures through the end of the year, and we estimate what general fund balance will be January 1. We estimate what capital fund balance will be. What I'm trying to express is this, the way that this budget is constructed, revenues and expenses will, it's what we're in the process of finalizing right now. For example, and this isn't the actual number, because this was a draft, but result from operations, which is revenues, total operating revenues, over top, total operating expenses for 2016 was approximately $100,000, which means that all of the monies that were inter-fund transfers came out of reserves. So, we ceded 200, I think it was $500,000, went to the capital fund. $500,000 went to the capital reserve fund. We ceded the OPEB trust for $750,000, and we created, based on my recommendations in 2015, what's called an operating reserve. The operating reserve fund is a vehicle that the borough code allows you to create, where you can only put an X number of dollars based on revenues, 5%. I think it was 100,000 last year, 111 last year, and another 100,000 this year. So, that is the operating reserve, which is basically, let's say there's a catastrophic event, or something happens where you don't want to raise taxes, that's the fund you go to. So, there are numerous funds that we've established, so that you're not trapped and have to raise taxes, even though our tax rate is very low compared to where the ceiling is. But, the policy has been, at least, I shouldn't say this, the practice has been since I came here, to use excess revenues, as Mr. Savona said, or revenues, you know, pennies from heaven, to cede these reserves. And the revenues that come in from various sources, permits, licenses, taxes, funds the operating revenues. So, that's one way to control, you know, making sure that your operating revenues, your operating expenses meet your operating revenues, and then you use your other monies that come in, or surpluses, to fund your reserves. And what I'm trying to say, when I say we have to be smart about reserves, and do we want to spend $3 million, which is your decision, not mine, is where your policy decision will come in, okay, we want to establish a policy of our operating reserve is at 5% of X, our capital reserve is at 10% of Y, and then you'll decide how much you want to spend going forward on streets, roads, or other improvements. You're welcome.
Can you have the hot tea, Paul?
Thank you.
Good job, Paul.
Very, and it literally is a quickie. It's a, just seek consent of council. After item A, there's one other item before you move on to public comment, that I want to seek consent from council on. But, next item is to consider taking a position, or at least authorizing an appearance at the zoning hearing board on 10102 Forest Street zoning application that's going before the zoning hearing board. Ms. Leonard, or do you want to-
Your application, consider taking precision.
Yeah, I would like council to take a position on that zoning application for Forest Street. It's for waiving off-street parking again in that area, and I think it is a true concern for council and the borough to keep waiving all of the parking in that area of town, to build houses where a parking lot is that we're going to lose, and then have another building with no parking. So, I would just like us to have our interests known at that zoning, if everyone else on council agrees with that.
And I think Mr. Savona would speak to that also. It's really about entering an appearance at the zoning hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, there's just-
And there's other issues.
So, I pulled up the actual zoning application, and Mr. Ed Hughes is here.
My name's Ed Hughes, no relation to Paul. I'm an attorney in Plymouth Meeting, and my client, Tom Jones, is here. Tom's the owner and developer of the project at Forest and West First Avenue.
So, Ed, why don't you just at least explain, I don't want to do it disservice. My understanding is the application, you're actually requesting two variances. I think one's relating to impervious surface, and the other is either an interpretation or a variance relating to the front yard setback? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And this is a proposal to remove a structure and construct three townhouses?
Correct. Right now, the property is the parking lot used by the Light Parker company that's going out of business. But it's not part of their property, it's a separate lot, separate ownership, and it was just like a lease arrangement to use it. So, they're going out of business, the lease goes away, the property's sitting there. We propose to develop three townhouses on it.
They didn't buy that from Light Parker?
Yes.
They did not buy that from Light Parker?
We bought it, didn't we?
I was supposed to tell me outside.
It's under agreement, we're going to go to settlement shortening.
So, it is part of that property, but is getting separated?
Who's selling it? Who's selling the property? Is it the same people that own Light Parker? Is that who's selling it, or?
It's actually, it's a complicated story. The son, what's his name on the lease?
Excuse me?
I don't have all the documents with me.
Mr. Jones, just for the record, we would need you to state your name, so people know who you are, because otherwise, if you're not speaking into a mic, it doesn't-
Yeah, I'm Tom Jones.
The owner on the application is listed as Sebastian and Carol Vecchio.
Yeah.
But we think by the time the zoning hearing comes up, we will own that property. It's not part of the Light Parker property, it's a separate, there are actually two separate lots on which a parking lot is built. So, we don't need a subdivision or to break the property out or anything, it's a separate piece of property. And the ownership, I understand, I'm not 100% sure of this, of the Light Parker property is different than the ownership of the parking lot, although it might be in the same family.
Mr. Hughes, I don't want to speak for Ms. Leonard, but I know in speaking with Ms. Leonard, there were two issues. The one issue is Mr. Vecchio, who is also the owner of a property at another location, is going before the zoning hearing board on this parcel for variances, but he also has made a request, I believe through your offices, you know, for not only a waiver of off-street parking, but for the requirement of a, I believe it was yours, if not, I apologize, of the requirements for what is necessary to receive, the study that's required to get off-street parking. Same owner, one parking lot being looked on as going away to be developed, and there's questions as to whether or not variances are something the council wants to intervene on or not, which is why the question is here, as to whether or not the council wants to enter an appearance at the zoning hearing board. But her point was they tie together. It's not just the variances, there are other issues related to the property owner.
Well, we're going to build three townhouses, they're going to have the six off-street parking spaces. We're not asking for a waiver for parking.
Not on that site.
Well, we don't own the other site.
I understand. I'm just, but she mentioned off-street parking, I just want you to understand what her head, is that fair?
Yes.
What's the other, okay, so, let's just talk about this one. This project, you're saying, Ed, you have, I see one car garage is indicated on the plan, and you're saying there's another off-street parking space someplace?
There's a surface parking lot and a garage parking, a surface parking space and a garage parking space on each lot.
Are they going to be, I have to ask this, because, you know, indoor parking tends to not be parking. Is there some, going to be some deed restriction that's placed on so they can't, they have to use the garage for parking and not storage, or close it in?
Well, that comes up a lot, and if that's something that the zoning board, or anybody wants, we would agree to that. The garage parking space should be for a car. A lot of people don't want it to use it, they put stuff in it, but you can have a deed restriction or some other enforceable restriction that would require that it be available for parking.
But I think, and I think Ms. Leonard's point is, she's asking council to enter an appearance to make sure those kinds of things are addressed, rather than just relying on the zoning hearing board to, am I correct, Ms. Leonard?
Well, there's a couple things, you can have someone go and make sure you have restrictions and things, or you can go and oppose it. So, are you going to oppose it, or just have, make sure that we address the issues properly? We're a couple percentage points over on the impervious surface. However, depending upon an interpretation, we comply with the impervious surface. We're a corner lot, so we don't have to have the 15-foot front yard setback if we match the existing setback along the street. And we're doing a study, we may match or be even a little bit further back than existing, so then we don't, may not need variance relief at all.
The problem, the problem is, if it was a dirt lot, and it wasn't a parking lot as it is now, it wouldn't be no problem. But, you're in the business district, we're getting a lot of pressure down there about parking. Now, we have Light Parker, they're selling the business, they're using that lot right now. So, what's going to happen, so if you just get approved and you build your homes, he's going to try to get relief for parking, so-
That's sort of like his problem.
Yeah, I, we understand that, but it's our problem, it comes back to us. We're not trying to deny anybody, anything, but the problem is, we're trying to regulate what goes on down there, and how we're going to, all these people coming in for parking, saying they, they're parking in this lot, they're parking in that- saying they, they're parking in this lot, they're parking in that lot, you know, everybody says down there that they own, own properties, they're all parking in that one parking lot. Well, so how many parking spots, how many people can park in that one parking lot?
Well, do you want, want us to keep it as a parking lot? What, what are we doing, who gets to park in it? If we own it?
But see, Light Parker's going to put something in that building, and Light Parker's going to, right now, it's, it's owned by, that I see, it's owned by the Light Parker family. I don't know that for a fact, but.
No, I said that, it's, it's the same family, but it's with the same people.
We understand that, but what, what it's doing is, you're choosing to buy that with the assumption that we're, we're going to grant what you need, correct?
Now, let, let me help clear this up.
We can build a different project.
No, no, what, let me.
Build the parking lot.
Excuse me, let, let me.
Where's the revenue for that? Who gets to park in that? Light Parker, the new guy, that, who, what? Why don't you build a parking garage next door, across the street, eight stories or something?
That's not.
Let me see if I can provide a little clarity. They're not saying that they are going to oppose this project that you're going to the zoning hearing board for. They're talking more esoterically in, in general about parking in that area, and how, well, it's, they're recognizing it's not your application, it's another property owner, they're not saying that is part of your application, at least that's not what I'm hearing. But they are aware that there are other requests in that area, and they see a parking lot going away, which is a, a separate issue, but more importantly, to Mr. Savona's point, if they are not at the zoning hearing board to assure that there's a condition put upon it, that there's a deed restriction that requires parking those garages, those garages could be filled up with storage, and then the, the note, the parking situation gets exacerbated. So that's the issue. All they're doing is expressing their concerns of what they're seeing is council people all over the area.
Although, I think it does, based on this discussion, I think it does bear a footnote, if, if this lot, and again, Ed, this isn't your issue, but I think I'm, if you follow council's concern here, if this lot has been used to support the Light Parker building as a business, and anybody who's a customer or, or an employee at Light Parker has been using this parking lot, and now they sell this lot to you, and maybe you're getting caught in the crossfire, and maybe it's unfair and it's not your fault, but I think it bears, taking this back to the seller, that if they decide to sell off their parking lot, and then they sell the building separately with no off-street parking, that could create a ripple effect for them later, because that's going to require whoever buys that building, or if Light Parker wants to continue, continue to use the building, they're going to have to come up with parking somewhere, and they've just sold it to you. So I, more as a message back to the seller, you, you should probably, at least, we'd be remiss if we didn't say so, that it, this will have an effect on the future use of that building, if they've sold off the parking lot for you guys to build townhouses.
Well, I understand. It was houses before, I built that parking lot in the eighties, for Light Parker.
Irrespective, building, yeah.
I understand that, I get that.
The building is now, and there is no building there, and, and while I, I don't disagree, it's a residential district and all that, it's, it is going to have maybe an unforeseen consequence later for the, for the future owner or the seller of that building, if they sell off this lot.
And again, immediately, the, there is an immediate issue relative to his point precisely, with respect to how are those garages going to be used, because they're going to impact everything else. It's the big picture they're painting for you.
Well, I, I would agree right now, we'll put the deed restriction, and, and any kind of enforceable language you want with regard to using the garage space for a car.
That's what we want to hear.
Yeah, we'd do that.
And that's what we, that's what we want Mike to go represent.
If that's why he goes and represents, I'll be happy. If he goes and says, you don't have a hardship, you don't have this, I, I oppose all the variants, that's a different story.
No, conversion.
If a family moves in there, they have three children, they got three cars, and then they use the garage for storage, they're putting all those cars back on the street.
Where there is no parking.
Correct. And I've, I've been doing this for a long time, and I've agreed to that kind of condition anytime was asked for.
And Light Parker's taking awful risks.
They are, absolutely.
It diminishes the value of the property.
We're not sure what motivation is, but.
Parking's very.
We just don't want the developers turning around every time and making their parking problems ours.
Correct.
That's what it's coming down to. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I never come to the borough and ask for a variance on parking. Because you never want a variance on parking.
You wouldn't be very popular, Ed.
Correct. Correct.
Are there any other, is there anything besides the, the deed restriction on the garage to make sure we have the available parking? Is there anything else that council has concerns about that we could address in conditions to the zoning board?
Just like in the future, having homes there is, if everything else goes forward, it's, it's not going to be the best spot for homes, but that's not, that's just an opinion.
There were homes there before.
I, I, I think there were homes all over before, but.
I mean, right down that, right down that road.
I know, I know exactly where they were.
You did say that there was a parking pad in front of the garage too, correct?
Correct. So each house would have two spaces there?
Two spaces. If they park in the garage. Well, you'll put that restriction in.
I can, I'll make those concerns known to the zoning hearing board as part of.
Want a motion, Mr. Savona?
Yeah, just a motion to authorize my office to represent to the zoning board that council will not object, provided that the applicant is willing to agree to a condition on a permanent deed restriction basis, that the garages proposed for the townhouses to be built at one hundred to one hundred and two Forest Street be restricted to use for parking only and not for residential storage.
Would, would it be appropriate for the motion to include that should some other issue arise that council can expand on there?
Uh, sure. Any other conditions deemed appropriate by borough engineer staff solicitor?
A motion?
I make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Say, I got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Very good.
Okay, and then, very quickly, what I mentioned, while it's not on your agenda, this is kind of a, a real-time thing, and we're getting it to the end of it, as you know, Ms. Checo had budgeted, and we had approved all the improvements at Aubrey Collins Park. We are moving forward with those improvements. When she budgeted it, she budgeted money for the demolition of that. Since our crews demolished it, we have approximately another ten thousand dollars remaining in that budget. Mr. Sokolowski is recommending a piece of equipment that would fill in an area rather nicely, that would finish off the park. And unless council has any objections, I would like to utilize that money that we didn't spend on demolition to buy another piece of equipment to finish off the park.
So what parks this?
Aubrey Collins. And again, it's, no motions necessary, I do, it's just like your consent or objection.
What about down the park, putting a thing over, they got the big slab up there, that they said, two minutes later, they were going to put a roof over it down there.
Oh, for, for.
Yeah, the pavilion down there.
Over the car?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, if that's something council would prefer over a piece of equipment, you'd have to tell me that.
Right now, I would.
What did our residents want? That's what you want to put down there?
I was down at the park, and it was filled with lots of kids, the equipment was all filled, and there is a corner section there that there was a piece of equipment, there's no longer, and I, I believe that another piece of equipment would continue to draw the kids, if you did, the pavilion is, I also said the same thing, and I think that should be planned for, but right now to finish the park, because I think that the pavilion roof is going to be more than six thousand dollars, should we not just buy a piece of equipment to finish the park for the kids.
I mean, we could price it, and I could bring it back to councils, to what that pavilion would cost?
You can price on it.
Okay.
Maybe talk to some of the people down there.
Okay, and are you okay with moving forward with the piece of equipment until then? No, no objections to that? And then we'll also price the pavilion?
Correct.
That's it, thank you. And then, Mr. Griffin, if we could have a brief executive session at the end of this, after you take public comment adjourned, that we couldn't get to before?
I, I have a question before, are we going to adjourn?
We're not going to adjourn yet.
Okay.
We got public comment? Any public comment? Any council? Okay, we got council? Mayor, you got anything?
Uh, just a reminder about the Halloween parade scheduled on a Tony night. If nobody has the next slot on the borough sign, could we put up Halloween parade information?
What time?
Harvey?
Registration starts at three, parade will kick off at the number two at four o'clock, down Fayette Street, the washies, prizes, snacks, et cetera.
What's up to Harvey?
Somebody just emailed me the date we have the rest of the information that we put up every year.
Okay. Okay.
I have one thing.
Leave me, we're going, hold on, take it easy.
I do have a question. At the presentation for the new fire truck, I was asked a question by Mr. Moore if the Ambucks is still going to be able to use Seventh Avenue Borough Hall building for Santa, since the building is closed. So I told him that I would ask that. I, I didn't see that it was a problem. I didn't see, I didn't see a problem either, but I told him I would bring it up at the meeting and have it on record, we can use, we can have Santa in our.
It's going to be your Christmas tree, it's going to be one day, yeah.
And I'm sure we're still decorating, and.
Absolutely.
That was mine.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
I have one thing.
So Bob, we're good on that.
We talked about many years ago, but you're, one of your code guys brought it up to me again, about addresses in the back, in the alleys on the back of the houses, very important for ambulances, fire companies, and your code people, that they know what house they're looking at when they go down the alley. I have my address back there, because when we tried to initiate it years back, about putting the addresses out back on the back of the houses, I had put mine in, but, and some people, they do it, but I think we should look at, try and encourage people to do it again, because I think it's a good, a good thing to have people's addresses on the back also.
Is it encouraging, or is it mandating? What's your?
I think it's mandating, I think we should man. Can we, Mike?
You could, but you can't right now, because it's not a requirement. I mean, you can encourage everybody.
He could, he's running down the, not running down, but he's driving down the back of the alley. He can see the number of the, you know?
The code, the code people, this is deja vu all over again, have been, have been asking recently about having this done. Encouraging is one thing, in order to require it, you'd have to pass an ordinance amendment to, to require.
And we should have did years back.
To do that. So, you know, right now, they have to remember what house they're looking at.
Well, if the, is the sense of council that you want to require it? It's a simple ordinance change. We're going, I'm preparing another ordinance to, to, again, twiddle with the parking around Borough Hall here. If you want, I can, I can add that to it, and we can have that on the agenda for approval.
It's just.
You just need to tell me that's what you want to do, and we'll do it, that's fine.
Do you want to make?
That's fine.
Well, my alley, if you put the number, they can't see it anyway.
They wouldn't see it in my house.
You're bigger.
No, no, my, the alley is up here, up down here, they can't see.
Can I place this as a work session item, and then you can vote on it?
It's a couple of places. Well, you got which one? Put it on there. I have to put mine up on, on the corner.
Well, you never know.
We can do that.
Yeah, you can do it. It'll, it'll be, it'll be a work session agenda item on a future day.
Okay. You have it?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do we know when the elementary school parade is?
We do not.
We do.
I'll, I'll find out tomorrow, I'll find out on that. Even they, even they, they usually got it, they usually got it on their sign outside the, outside the school.
Yeah, I'll go along, I'll go along. I just want to say thank you to all of those who organized last weekend's fire truck housing. It was a really nice event, it was the first time I was ever at a housing, and it was very meaningful, and a lot of appreciation for that, as well as those who were involved in the Clay Dock Walk, and the Beer Garden, or the Beer Festival, the Rotary. It was a really great weekend last weekend for country happening, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Karen? You got anything?
I'm fine, thank you.
You're trying to think, huh? You got anything?
No, I just, no.
Well, I got something. Paul, this is yours. Now, everybody in this borough knows on Mondays are holidays.